There's the waiver of platte. Not that I'm aware of.
You want to do a roll call, Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Jay Cable, Jay, Gaye Chables, would you please lead the pledge?
Oh, no. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, just as for all.
Thank you, Gaye. All right.
How are you? Good.
I guess I'm going to pass this over to Andy or just hand it over to...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this is Marty's show.
Okay.
And I'll certainly defer to his opening comments.
Marty? Show's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Good evening, residents, mayor, vice mayor, and councilmembers. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight, before I firmly introduce Bela Sherman, CPA and director, who is here by my side, from the independent auditing firm of Markham LLP, I am pleased to provide to you all tonight the town's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended 2016. The town's fiscal year 2016 CAFR is the 10th consecutive CAFR prepared since 2007 and the 11th overall since the town's inception. Okay, specifically, a few key favorable financial highlights that I wish to report tonight is, number one, the independent auditor's report. Bela will give more elaboration during her presentation. However, as a summary, it reflects an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion. And that is the highest assurance that can be given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. A second item, and we have two slides to go over, and something which was not unexpected. If you refer to the CAFR, and I also failed to mention, I have extra copies to distribute by the town clerk. I have one up here by the podium if anyone would like to look at it. It is in the agenda package. And specifically, this slide is page 67 or page 97 of 179 from the agenda package. Now, this reflects our unassigned fund balance, otherwise known as your reserves. And you will notice a decrease only slightly over 1.6 million from 4,365,000 to 2,500,000. Now, the reason why I say only, it sounds like a big number. But we budgeted in excess of 2 million for our public purchase land acquisition during March of 2016. But we were fortunate to have throughout the year operational excesses of revenues over expenditures in the approximate amount of 400,000, favorably resulting in a smaller utilization of our unassigned fund balance reserve. The second thing that's important to mention is that the general fund fund balance reserves of 2,484,910 represents 20 percent of our total general fund expenditures and net transfers for 2016. Therefore, the town continues to exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance standard, otherwise known as a benchmark, as recommended by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of up to 16.7 percent. So we're at 20 percent. The recommended minimum is at 16.7 percent. The second slide, which Russell, please show, and I want to emphasize, this is government-wide assets. Our government-wide assets, you see, has grown, and it exceeds our liabilities by 53,941,287 dollars. And this analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector. And it shows that we are in a surplus net government-wide position overall. Now, during 2016, I also would like to congratulate and acknowledge all the town staff in attendance tonight. So I'm going to have to ask them to please stand up. Anyone here from the town? Not all of them are here, but we have Sandy Longo, Robert Solera, Emily McCord-Setti, and Vanessa Redman. Thank you all, because we finished the year in a conservative and fiscally responsible manner, which created a net positive increase, a net position in both the total of all the town's governmental funds. And that was 1,555,809 dollars. And also, within our solid waste enterprise fund, in the amount of 95,621. This is the sixth consecutive year of positive increases in both fund types. Finally, I'm proud to report for the third straight fiscal year that the independent auditor's report on internal controls, that's page 85 and 86, and the management letter in accordance with the rules of the auditor general of the state of Florida, and that's on page 87, 88, identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Now, with all that in mind, I'm done with my presentation, but I'd like to introduce and welcome a presenter from Markham LLP. Bela Sherman has more than 20 years of experience providing accounting, auditing, and advisory services for a wide range of entities, including municipal governments. As a CPA and director in Markham LLP's Assurance Division, her primary responsibilities include onsite supervision, review of audit engagements to ensure they are prepared in accordance with professional and firm standards. Ms. Sherman provides guidance to clients ranging from complex accounting issues to general business and accounting developments. She also has significant experience in the evaluation of internal controls. So with that, please come up and welcome.
Good evening. I think my presentation will be less than my bio there. That was a lot. So the, one of the things I'm going to highlight, I'm not going through the numbers. These are September 30th, and Marty went through those particular highlights. But we always direct people to the management discussion and analysis, because it really gives you an overview of what's really important and what happened in the year. And that starts on page four, and it starts with highlights. And it's very useful information. So with the CAFR, which is the comprehensive annual financial report, you get an introductory section, so you get to see your pictures there and what everyone is doing. And then you have the stat sections. And that's going to give you a historical trend of what's actually happening with the town. We are required by the state, I mean, all municipalities are required within nine months to have an annual audit in accordance with accounting principles, which are what you would have through the AICPA if you were a private. But you have a higher standard under government auditing standards. And that's what we did here. And that's why Marty was talking about the report on internal control. That's considered part of our audit. The state requires us to make sure that you all get a copy of the financial statements. And we either email it or present this way. And we also are required, by professional standards, to communicate to you what's called our communication to those charged with governance. And that's the letter that I have here. And it basically, as Marty said, that we issued a clean opinion saying that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that we used also government auditing standards. There was only one accounting standard that changed this year that had very little impact. You may not even have noticed it. But they've changed the definition of fair value and how it's reported. And then there's this whole hierarchy. But because your investments are in Florida Prime, which is considered an external investment pool, it's at amortized cost, cash is cash. And so it really had very little impact on your financial statements. We had no difficulties. We have found that the staff is great. They're extremely helpful. Andy is always there, you know, Marty, whenever we need them. There are no uncorrected misstatements. Sometimes there are, or there's a disagreement. And, you know, we'll bring those to your attention if they're there, just so you can know the magnitude. We had no disagreements with management. We received the management representations that we're required to. Otherwise, we have what's called a scope limitation, and we can't issue, because this is really prepared by management. These are management's numbers. And we were not aware that any other accountants were, you know, requested any information. Like, there were no conflicts as regarding how items were being processed or what the disclosure or how to present it in the financial statements. Just one other comment. And we reported, you have funds. So what is a little bit different when you're dealing with a government, as you know, is that you have what's called opinion units. So your major funds are opinion units, and then we actually opine overall. So there's a number of opinions that you will actually see in your financial statements. Basically, that's all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions for us or me.
Yeah, just a question. So I just want to get your thoughts, your opinion, if you feel comfortable giving it. From the standpoint of reserves, so 17 percent approximately is the minimum. We're at 20, so that's great. We're significantly above the minimum. But what I'm interested in is, is there a percentage that we should be shooting for or that you typically see out there? You know, how, I'm just going to get your opinion of where we are and where we should be.
Yeah. Well, as Marty said, you know, most of the information out there comes out from the GFOA and then the FGFOA, if it's Florida. And if they're saying 20 percent, you know, that's a good number, basically. If there's, there's some municipalities operating on eight. It's just if there's a catastrophic event, do you have something that you could draw on? And so you look and you say, like, do I need three months' worth of, you know, cash for expenditures and things of that nature? So it depends, you know, a lot on the municipality and what they have access to. You've been very fortunate in your statements, just in your, like, you didn't have to go through all the hoops that people went through with pensions last year. And then next, you know, this year, it was everybody going through it with investments. But yours are in prime, which is, you know, cash, amortized cost. Next year is OPEB, and you'll have to see what happens, because they want the disclosures for pensions to now be the same for OPEB. And that's state mandated. Not that you have to provide it. People have to pay for it. But you have to allow them on your plan when they retire and let them pay for it. So there's this concept called interest rate subsidy. I think it's crazy, but it's got, going to be there next year.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Marty keeps us out of trouble. I don't know if you saw it, but there's a crystal ball on his desk back there.
No, he does. But also, I was noticing your pictures. I mean, this is a beautiful document. And I think the contest should...
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, the pictures have our new town hall roof on it. If anyone could notice that, the steel, I think we're category five, Andy? Is that what it is? Five plus at this point. And then also the land acquisition. The parcels, now known as public purpose land acquisition for the fiscal year. It's two key milestones within the town. With that in mind, thank you, Bela. And it is now recommended that the town council introduce, then accept via motion, the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham LLP, for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2016, including the communications to those charged with governance letter dated March 16th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to accept that, except that, including the additions.
I second it.
Can I jump in here, Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention something very quickly. We were projecting a $300,000 surplus, if you remember back at the budget talks and several months ago. And that's been now exceeded by over $100,000, by a third higher. So I just want to say, you know, for the record, great job, Marty, great job, Andy. You guys are really watching the nickels, dimes, and quarters, and it shows. And we really do appreciate it. Makes our job a lot, lot more comfortable up here, knowing that we've got you guys supporting us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, public, oh, okay, John.
My only comment is to the, back when we had Wilma, it was $10 million to clean up the town. Always keep that in mind. We need to have some cash unencumbered, on hand, to tackle that. And I think that job could have been done for half as much if we weren't in a rush. I think if, you know, we manage that better, we can get it done for half the price. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, public comment is closed. Russell? Anybody else up here have anything to say? Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Awesome. Absolutely. All right. Do we need to, CAFR?
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the sole quasi-judicial item on the agenda.
Yeah, so we got to, do we got to break and start again?
No, 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 it's not an LPA. We just got to announce the quasi-judicial item. And if you'd like, Mayor, I'll take over.
Go right ahead.
And run the quasi-judicial portion. The next item on the agenda, which is item number four, WP-1616, is quasi-judicial in nature. The rules of quasi-judicial hearings is found within the agenda. This item has been advertised in accordance with Florida law. If anyone would like me to read in the rules of quasi-judicial, I'm happy to do so. If not, you can read it, it's in here. Anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item has to be sworn in for the record in order to be able to speak and have their testimony be treated with any weight. So anyone wishing to potentially speak, whether you want to or may not or want to anyway, please stand and raise your right hand, and Russell will swear you in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. At this time, I will have Russell read the sole item into the record. Then we'll do Jennings disclosures, and then we will start the hearing.
This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of platte application number WP-1616 to subdivide approximately 11.52 net acres of property into two lots, generally located at the northwest corner of Sterling Road at its intersection with Southwest 130th Avenue, Malaluga Road, described as the east half of tracks 37, 38, 39, and 40, and the east 165 feet of the west half of tracks 37, 38, 39, and 40 in section 35, Township 50 South, Range 40 East, according to the platte of Florida Fruitlands Company subdivision number one, recorded in platte book two at page 17 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida. Less the north 633.02 feet, south 40 feet, and east 50 feet of the said combined parcels, said lands situate lying and being in the town of Southwest Ranches, Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Mayor, council, has anyone had any ex parte communication concerning this item? If so, please disclose at this time.
No.
Okay. Seeing none, who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant? If you could just please state your name for the record, your address, that you've been sworn in, and you know why you're here.
Sure. Jason Wilson, Pillar Consulting, Pillar Consultants, representing the applicant, Robert Lewin.
And you've been sworn in?
I have.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Jeff Cadums from the town's planning department to enter into the staff reported into the record and to give a synopsis of the report. Then we'll turn it back over to you if you have anything additional to add. Jeff?
Thanks, Keith. This is, this is a waiver of platte application to subdivide 11.52 acres into two lots. This waiver of platte is notable as compared to others because there's a specific development plan in this case that the applicant came in, came in with. This is not speculative. And so we worked with the applicant and the applicant representatives to come up with a lot split that would meet all code requirements when they built per plan. This is rural ranch zoning, so the minimum lot acreage is two acres. And the plan is to develop a personal residence on one lot, a residence for family on the second, 2.4-acre lake shared between the two lots, and then some recreational amenities. Everything is designed so that regardless of who owns what, right now, it functions as sort of a family compound the way it's designed. But should one of the lots be sold off in the future, as is always an eventuality, each lot stands on their own, all the improvements stand on their own, and there won't be any code issues with regard to access, setbacks, any development standards at all. Lot one will be 6.11 acres in area that's exclusive of the lake and will contain all the recreational amenities and the petitioner's planned residence. Lot two will be two and three-quarter acres in area exclusive of the lake. Access to both lots will be from Malaluga. There's no canal crossing required over there. And although they will share primary access per the development plan, they both can, additional driveways can be placed as needed in the future without any additional approvals. The petitioner is required to dedicate 15 feet of right-of-way for Sterling Road in order to complete the standard 55-foot half-section. This 110-foot section ultimately envisions the canal, one single canal, all the way down Sterling on one side, as opposed to the alternating sides in Sunshine Ranches, as well as sufficient shoulder to avoid future need for guard rail and avoid cars winding up in the canal. So accordingly, the canal on Sterling is located in between the actual roadway and this property. So this 15 feet is for long-range planning. It's with that logic in mind that the staff and the applicant have discussed the idea of allowing the landscape berm, which already exists, to be located within that 15-foot right-of-way to be dedicated, as well as some substantial portions of a structural wall that the applicant proposes, and of course landscaping, subject to a right-of-way occupancy agreement and indemnification agreement that requires everything to be taken down should the town need that right-of-way in the future for improvements. The staff recommendation, should the council wish to approve this item, is that it will not become effective until the resolution approving the application has been recorded in the public records. Approval expires within six months from the date of approval unless the resolution and attached, required attachments have been recorded. The petitioner shall remove the nonconforming structure near the northwest property line of lot two prior to issuance of any permit for a structure, which the petitioner has agreed to. And then, prior to recordation of the resolution, ensure full cost recovery has been met, execute the quit claim for the 15 feet of right-of-way, execute the standard form agreement allowing the landscape berm and portions of the structural wall to be located within the 15-foot strip for Sterling Road to be dedicated, and to grant a utility easement to Comcast per its request. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff at this time? Seeing none, turn it back over to the applicant. Do you have any questions of Jeff, or would you like to make a further presentation?
I have nothing else to add, except I'd just like to thank Mr. Cadums and staff for, with this process. It was very helpful.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions of the applicant?
Steve does. Looks like a great project. It really does. It sounds like it's going to be a really nice place. I'm just curious on a couple of things, just for my own curiosity, to tell you the truth, having looked at it and understand it. The, the access, so then all the access is going to be coming in through Malaluga?
That is correct.
Okay, for both properties. So it sounds like everything is set up so that these properties, you know, someday could be separated. Or they are, they are separated, but one could be sold. What about the access after that? Would it, at that point, would it be planned that it would go off of Sterling or still off Malaluga?
No, the two, the two drives were set up and the lots were split so that if in the future, these lots were sold and it wasn't a family compound, as Jeff had talked about it.
Right.
Basically, one lot has already won access off of Malaluga. The northern lot has their own access. So the two, the two lot accesses that are currently proposed separate the lots.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
I'm familiar, I think, with this piece of property. It's where the barn was, and they removed the barn?
Yes.
On the corner. That is a dedicated trail. We haven't been able to incorporate it or say, put it in. So I think the landscaping should be considered. The wall isn't a problem. He said something about putting up a wall there. But I think the landscaping, and is that, is that the 50 feet that would be dedicated normally on each side along Sterling? Is that what that is? So there's 15 feet left?
There's, there has to be 55 on each side of the center line. And right, right now, there is, there's 40. So this would be an additional 15.
So this is an additional to the 55?
No, it completes the 55.
That, that's what I'm saying. In other words, they're not giving any additional. It's just, it's the original trail.
It meets the minimum section for Sterling.
Right, because it curves, the canal jumps from the, from one, from the south side to the north side. I just want to make sure that you're aware that that is a trail in the future. You know, that's what it was set up for. So their landscaping should be our consideration. If they put a bunch of oak trees in there, let's say, and they put them in the middle, then they have to tear them all down. But if they put them away from it so the trail can still exist, it doesn't matter. Just consider the fact that there's a trail there. That's the only thing I would care about. Thank you.
New Orleansworth, 199th Avenue. As to the trail, it should be on the plans right now where that trail is going to be located and dedicated. Because we said, as those properties come forward, the trail will be dedicated at that time. It is in the comp plan that way. Therefore, where is the trail on the plans? And I want the trail on the plans. Otherwise, you can't do the plans because that's what the comp plan says. So let's get it on there. Thank you.
David Kozenski, sixty-four-eleven Hollaty Trail. Just had a call prior to the meeting about neighbors that were complaining about the construction being initiated prior to the permitting being approved. I was just asked to speak about that. And then I'd like to echo concerns of both Newell and Mary Gay about the horse trail. Make sure it is on the plan, that it cannot be disrupted because that's the nature of our town. Thank you.
Ray, any other members of the public wish to speak? You, you don't have to. Seeing the public session closed, David, to answer your question, there's been no construction on this property without permits. They had a demolition permit and that's what they did. So please tell whoever called you that they're completely wrong. Jeff, could you please respond to the trail comment?
I will, I will. I'm also going to defer to the applicant to address this as well. There, there are some properties on Sterling that we've gotten trail easements for in the past. This was primarily soon after the town's formation. In the ensuing years, the comp plan was amended to discuss the location of trails. And it seems to have been the policy that the most likely trail alignments would be in the existing swales of rights-of-way because properties develop in a, redevelop in a piecemeal fashion. Most properties along Sterling Road, for example, are built. So obtaining a future trail easement that actually goes the length of Sterling or any really consecutive part of it is probably not going to happen. So if the council does wish to, to require an additional easement for trails, then we can do that. I just want to have the applicant address how that would work relative to landscaping and a berm that's already on the property in the location of the additional fifteen feet of right-of-way. Our office did a study some years ago to look at the adequacy of swales for the trail alignments because this was a discussion that we've been having as to where, where are these trails going to exist? And in some cases, the comp plan actually says they're going to be on the street. The riders will literally use the pavement. In other cases, it basically says it's on the north side or the south side, basically whether it's a swell or, or an additional dedicated easement. We certainly do get dedicated easements when there would otherwise be no right for an equestrian to use an area. For example, with Akaya Estates, we made sure there was a trail coming through the community that traversed private, private street as well as a canal area to make it really clear that everything was to be designed with equestrian use in mind and to give notice to the homeowners association that this was a trail, trail right-of-way, if you will. So I'll leave it to the councils to whether you want to require that additional easement. And again, ask the applicant to address how that will, how that will work.
Jeff, can I ask a legal question for you?
Yeah.
By giving fifty-five feet here, you know, essentially, that would essentially be for the eventual widening of Sterling Road. If Sterling Road is never widened, which, you know, council's been pretty adamant on this for the last seventeen years, there's going to be a huge swell there.
Right. And, and that's, and that's the thinking. The fifty, the one-hundred-and-ten feet for Sterling Road, it's not to see Sterling on four lanes because we know that's, that's not happening. It was really for safety improvements, drainage, and a trail alignment, which is why, you know, we did not ask for an additional trail in this case. As well, you know, we have the canal alternating sides of the road, so it's really hard to get, you know, one single alignment. But again, that's why I leave it to, to council and the applicant to discuss the specifics here.
Sure. If I may, on the north side of Sterling Road, there's a canal. On the north side of that canal, there's a bank, and there's actually a flat area that's clear. That's all considered right-of-way within that forty-foot half-section of the right-of-way. It's, it's traversable. There's no problem there. We're giving up an additional fifteen feet, but we're just looking to put our wall and landscaping within that additional fifteen feet. But there is a fifteen-foot clear along the south side of our property.
That's, that's all we've ever asked.
All right. So what do we do? Just state that that's, that part of that's the trail?
I, I mean.
Well, that, that's right-of-way.
It is.
I understand it's right-of-way, but can we consider it right-of-way and trail right-of-way? Can we consider it both?
You know, Jeff.
We, we consider, as I have been representing, we consider that the trail alignment is the actual swell. So yes, we're considering that a multi-use swell.
Okay, let me ask you. When they dedicate the fifty, the additional fifteen feet, what is that dedication? Is it a dedication of additional right-of-way?
It's right-of-way for the town to use however it sees fit in the future.
Is there any way to, to document that or formalize it, that that is to be used for a trail?
We'll, we'll make sure that the conveyance document says right-of-way and equestrian trail.
Okay.
A multipurpose trail, I think, is how we actually call it. So I don't think that's a problem for, for anyone. All right. Are there any other?
Well, on top of that, he says that they've got clearances within that forty-foot, and they want to use, put, how much of that fifteen-foot are you all looking at using related to your wall or landscaping?
The additional fifteen-foot of right-of-way that we're looking to dedicate at this point, we're looking to utilize pretty well, put the, put the wall right on the, the current property line. So at the forty-foot half-right-of-way section would be that wall and wall fence and also the landscaping just north.
So we wouldn't officially have use of that additional fifteen feet. But when and if we need it later, you're, you're in agreement with removing the wall and taking it out of the way and
Correct.
and so on and so forth.
And for the council, that document's actually already been created and the residents.
Nobody's going to take down their wall.
No, no, no. I, I want to make this clear because.
Be serious.
Listen, we've, we've made people. We've made people take down garages that were built too close.
I, I, I want to respond to this because numerous properties in the ranches, we call it a maintenance indemnification and work agreement. And that says that if the municipality ever wants that property back, they, it's ours.
I, I get, I get what it says.
Yeah.
But I also get that we're not in the business of telling people in town to, to destroy their personal property.
Well, it's not their property.
It is their, they built the wall. It's their, it's their.
We're allowing that. It's like give, us giving them a, you know, variance to build the fence in the right-of-way.
Are you going to go through town and start telling people to take down walls? Or, or rip out? Not.
No.
You know, we, we've got Tisner, and we're working very diligently so that if there's nice things in the swell, we're going around it to make sure that we don't have this exact situation. If they've got a wall there, there's never going to be a trail there. That's.
Counsel, can I, can I clarify that, please?
Please.
There is, there's fifteen feet of clear right-of-way now that's in addition to the fifteen feet they're dedicating. The fifteen feet they're dedicating is, has the berm and would have the wall. But there's already fifteen feet that's our property that's not affected at all by this application where the trail alignment goes.
Okay.
It's fifteen plus fifteen, so it's thirty together.
Okay, that wasn't really expressed.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Gay.
I think what confuses this whole thing is we get fifty-five feet. Out of that fifty-five feet, you have a canal and fifteen-footed trail. The rest of that property is his. I personally don't know why he's dedicating it. Because he's putting a wall and laying it up.
We're requiring it to get the full fifty-five-foot cross-section in case there ever, ever is an expansion of the roadway. That's right.
So this is, this is forty feet right here, but the fifteen-foot of clear is in that.
Oh.
So you can ride, and this can be your trail.
Straight through.
Exactly. And then if there is a widening of the road.
Yeah.
Fifty years from now.
Okay.
Sorry. There you go.
All right. Are there any other questions of the applicant or, or staff?
I'll make a motion to approve as recommend, with the recommendations from staff.
Any meeting in second?
Any additional public comment?
No, it's already done.
Okay.
Just vote.
Any comment? Call a question.
Are we approving that? Are we approving that he's going to move it back?
No.
The, the net effect is that where the wall is being built or being planned will allow for a trail to be in there regardless of the wall. There'll be about fifteen feet available for a trail the way it is today and, and after the wall is built.
But in a hundred years from now, in a hundred years from now, if they're going to widen Sterling Road, they can make him take the wall down and do it.
Yeah, the trail is good until we, we expand Sterling Road, which I hope will never happen.
So the wall is going in where the existing fence is right now?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's right.
Go ahead, call it.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fister Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome.
You guys are done unless you want to stay.
Unless you're bored, you want to hang out.
Sometimes they reconsider if you stay. Public comment is item number five. Mayor, council, we have two speakers, Bob Hartman and John Eastman.
All right.
Bob Hartman, fifty-four, forty-one, Southwest one ninety-eight Terrace. Also president of Country Estates Homeowners Association. This coming Sunday from eleven to three, we're having our second annual barbecue. It's family-oriented. We're going to have a DJ, we're going to have a bounce house, face painting, all kinds of fun stuff. It's at Country Estates Park. For those who don't know where that is, that's at one ninetieth Avenue and Griffin Road. Food, fun, friends. I mean, it's, it's about just relaxing, enjoying, and have a good time with your neighbors. Our whole point is to have fun with this. This isn't a giant fundraiser. It, it, it has one added benefit this year. We're going to do the groundbreaking for the new ball fields that are going in, so we're looking forward to that. So I want to invite everybody out at home and here. It should be a great time. I do want to make one point that, that you guys should really know. I've asked December for help on things over the years, and she's always been a great help. But she has just surpassed expectations this time. We've been communicating for, I don't know, roughly two weeks. She's been proactive, she's been reactive, she's got everything all taken care of. And I'm so confident she's gone on vacation, and I'm not even worried about it because she's got everything all taken care of. I hope.
That's December.
Somebody's seconding it, I hope. But I, I wanted to point it out, Andy, because she deserves the kudos. She's been a big help. But other than that, everybody's invited. Whoever can make it, we're going to break ground, break bread, and have some fun. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, we're going to get new photos next year?
Going to get what?
We're going to get a new photo next year?
This is from last year.
I know.
Oh, yeah, it'll be new photos next year.
Okay.
Are you on there?
No.
Oh, okay. You want to be on there?
No, no, I, I just looked at it really good.
Good evening, council. I got two items to talk about tonight. I think I briefed some of you through emails over the past week. I might run a minute or two over. I hope you indulge me. John Eastman, forty-eight oh one, Southwest one eighty-eight Avenue, Country Estates. The first item, Florida Power and Light. As you know, they're trying to build two new nuclear plants at Turkey Point, units six and seven. I've been following this for the past few years. I've gone to a lot of hearings. I've spoke on it. I've written letters. It's in process. It's coming along. It's not looking too good for them.
Go ahead.
The, the plant, the design has a lot of inherent problems. It's not appropriate for southeast Florida. We have thirteen million people living on our coast now. I think it's a big mistake. But the Public Service Commission and FPL are sailing right along with the approval process. While they got a monkey wrench in their gears from one of the courts. The towns down in South Miami objected to the high-tension wires that were going to run right up US one. They were going to be a hundred and fifty feet tall, and these were massive high-voltage lines like you've never seen before to connect those two reactor units with the rest of the state. Much bigger than what we see off in the Everglades. And they were running them right up US one and then out through some environmentally sensitive areas. Well, the, the local towns objected. They said it's not going to meet our zoning and we're not passing it. So I'm, I'm taking something very complicated. I'm trying to condense it down. But basically, the courts ruled in favor of the, the towns down there that yes, you can have zoning control of what comes through your area, and that's the way it went. So case settled. Well, FPL, with their deep pockets, got a couple of friends in North Florida in the state legislature to put some bills out, one in the Senate, one in the House. And these will effectively strip local control of zoning from anything FPL does. And that will be statewide. It'll apply to the other utilities as well. I think that our lobbyists needs to work on this. We can never give up local control of something so important, especially in our rural area. You know, Griffin Road is a corridor that runs all the way to the ocean. And if FPL decided to bolster their infrastructure, who knows what they would put in on Griffin, and we would have no say at all. But there was a clever caveat they put in there. The local zoning people that are not going to be able to have any say in what FPL does will still get to bill their normal fees. So they threw them a bone, and you know, that's the way that went. Okay. So that's one thing we need to watch out for. It's, it's a, it's not a good bill. We hope that, you know, they can kill it and go with what the court said. Keep, keep local control over zoning. The next item I want to talk to you about is even more important, and that is 5G. We all hear about 5G, but no one really knows about it. I'll try to give you a very brief outline and then what's going on in Tallahassee with 5G. 5G is the next network. You know, we have 4G on our phones. Well, 5G is a little bit different. It operates in a different frequency band, a microwave band, twenty-four to a hundred thousand gigahertz. The wavelength doesn't quite go as far as what we have now. So they have to put in a lot more towers in order to make this work. In fact, they have to put in so many towers to get adequate coverage, you're going to have to put a tower on every single light pole. And, you know, maybe even erect light poles in order to get this, this system to work. It's a global standard. Every telephone company or telecom in the world met, and they've all agreed on a standard. So this is going in globally. This is a global 5G system. This frequency band that they're choosing is not currently used. The FCC's freeing it up. The military uses some of the, shares some of it. So it's, it's a, it's a whole new bird here. And I will say that there's been many studies done, too many to mention, probably fifty, maybe even a hundred, that the frequency band causes cancer, aggravates tumors. It's like the old brick phones. You know, everybody got a brain tumor from the old brick phones. So it's a troubling system. And the director of the FCC, Mr. Wheeler, who's not there anymore, but he steamrolled this through. So federally, it's done. Now they're down to the state level. And we're back to local control in order for them to come into local communities and do all this massive infrastructure, and it is massive. The wiring, the, the hardware that's going to go up, and then the ultimate radiation we're going to be suffering will affect everybody in any urban area and even in some non-urban areas. But the, the state of Florida, they found a couple friendly legislators up in the north end, and they've introduced two bills, Senate and companion bill, to once again strip local control and zoning. So that when this 5G comes into the state of Florida, Southwest Ranches will have zero say in where they put these things, how the system goes in, or even if we want it. You know, our town might get, get together and say, hey, this is harmful. We don't want it at all. But we're not going to have the say if these two bills go. And they got out of committee ten to one, ten, ten to nothing. They, they both cleared committees. So these are two important things we need to watch in Tallahassee. They have direct effect on us, and the potential with this 5G, they have done, they're, FCC's aware of the health studies, and they've just decided to plow ahead with it, you know? Torpedoes be damned, and let's just do it. But this is far worse than, you know, the smart meters or anything like that because this is something you, you have no power over to turn it off. And they're there frying us with this, this wave band. And anyway, I hope. there frying us with this wave band. And anyway, I hope that, you know, as the word gets out, that the public in this country will start questioning it, and maybe this thing can get derailed, or at least redesigned. But you know, it's a global system, it has a global standard, and now they're working on the politics, and we need to push back very hard on this one. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, John. Thanks. Any other public comment? Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. And we're going to go to council member comments. Board reports? All right. I don't think we have any, but Gay does? Oh, Gay's got an update. I was there.
Well, I'm not going to do parks, because if you've been by Tom Thumb, you see that there's still, you know, kind of lots of mud. But I am going to talk to you about the Historical Society. We're like the Astronaut Society. We're separate from the town, but we're a service to the town. That's the whole point. And they decided that we were going to do a book originally, and everybody in the town that's businesses or have some sort of service were going to be in the book. Well, we found a lot of, number one, it was extremely costly. Number two, once you print it, that's it. You're not going to put one out a year like the telephone company. And it was going to cost the people quite a bit of money to just put their ad in there. So then we decided we might look at the computer aspect of it and do a website and connect it to the town through the Historical Society. It has so many benefits to the town as far as the history and things that we can do to advertise present things that are going on in the past, and put everything that we have in our archives would go in there, so we would have a permanent record, and it would be on our website. And then they would only advertise, and that's how it's going to pay for itself. The people in the town would pay so much a month to have their ads, but only residents of the town and not outsiders. And several times, people said, well, what about outsiders? You know, we can really build. No, this is a service to the town. So which came first, a chicken or the egg? They ask us, what does it look like? We don't know. We're not computer people. So we have to pay to get the website up and get the samples of how it's going to look, so that we then can sell it to the people that are anxiously waiting to buy it. We've talked, we have at least 50, but we don't want to take their money because we don't know when it's going to be out if we haven't gotten the creator to create it yet. And they told us that they could start and have it up and running in a month. So in a month, if we pay them, they could have it up and running. But we don't have the money. So what we'd like to do is we'll give you a proposal of what our plan is and how we're going to do this, and what the services will be. And we need, they will take, it's going to cost 5,000. So they will start with a third, a third, a third. So if we can get a third, then we should be able to start raising the money at that point, when they give us a sample, and we know what we're doing at that. Then we can get the money and pay you back. We don't want you to give us the 5,000. We just want to borrow the 5,000 and know that they're paid, and then go out and get the ads. So think about it, and we'll be back at the next meeting, or sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Noel?
Noel Hollins with Chair of the Complacency Plan. In January, you approved the business site out at US-27, and was sent over to our planning department to develop the ordinances, implementing ordinances. We passed a motion in the complan asking the council to give us review authority, because that is not part of our purview. So, and we have not heard back as of our meeting last Thursday from the council whether or not we will get that authority to review it or not. So I'm asking you again if you would give the Complacency Plan review authority of the implementing ordinances on the business site out on US-27. Thank you.
No other comments for boards? No other board comments? Okay. Council member comments?
Yeah, I'll lead off.
Go ahead.
I'll be quick. Just a couple of announcements. Bob already mentioned the Country Estates. Can you hear me now? Bob, I won't reiterate what Bob said, but basically, everybody needs to come out this Sunday to the barbecue and the groundbreaking, 11 to 3. April 1st, we have the Egg Extravaganza at Rolling Oaks, open to the town, all kids, a big egg hunt. Rumor has it that the Easter Bunny will be there. The light breakfast is going to be served at 11, and then the egg hunts and the various age groups start at 12. I can tell you this much, there's over 5,000 eggs. And the reason I know this is because they're in my living room. So hopefully, they're going to disappear here very quickly. So the Easter Bunny's going to come collect them. And then on April 8th, we have hazmat in the park from 8 to 2, and the Broward BSO shredding service will be there from 10 to 1. It's a, excuse me, it's a free service provided by BSO for the town, and I urge everybody to take advantage of it. It's really great. All your file financial records, things of that nature, they turn them into confetti in a matter of seconds, and you can watch them do it. So I urge everybody to do that. And I said I'd be brief, because I'd really like to hear what happened in Tallahassee. So I'm going to turn it over to all the people who want.
All right. Dee, you want to go next?
I'd just like to say I had my first experience of Tallahassee and how it works, and I was accompanied by our mayor and Vice Mayor Steve Bright Cruz and Astronaut and my husband. I did not travel with them and by myself. We actually got to watch a bill that was presented and put on the floor, and they were voting on it. If you've never seen it, it's quite interesting to witness and to hear all the different opinions and the pros and the cons of everything that was going on. Got to see the old Capitol, and just had a really good time, and want to thank my colleagues here for showing me a really good time. And Doug, I'm sorry you couldn't make it to the breakfast with us, but it was not six blocks, and it was over 30 degrees, so it wasn't really too bad.
It was extremely cold.
Very cold, very cold. And ended up coming back with colds, and Astronaut was there, and of course, he got sick too. But had a wonderful time, and want to thank the town for giving me that opportunity to go up there and see government. A small piece of it, but some government. But it was very interesting that everywhere you went was jars of mints. And my husband said to me, he said, I don't understand. There's mints wherever you go. And I looked at him, and I said, well, you know, there's a lot of kissing going on up here, so maybe they give you the mint depression, you're about to go to the next one. But like I said, it was, yeah. I'm not quite sure on that, but, but like I said, it was extremely interesting. I'm not really that much into the political, that part of it or anything, but even I found it very interesting in some of the history, and some of the people that we met there are. Our lobbyists, Nelson Diaz and Kevin. I don't know Kevin's last name, but very nice people, and got to meet our representatives, and Mr. Stark can't wait to come back here. And we told him we are so excited for him to come back, because we hope he comes back with money, which didn't look too bad for us. So hopefully, we can depend on some of that. And that's it. Thank you.
Fay, want to go? You're good. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great description of Tallahassee. I'll add a couple of things, but I think you've outcovered it. We did have some great meetings there with a number of our representatives, and I really need to give kudos to Southern Strategies, our lobbyists up there. They really paved the way for us before we got there. Everybody was aware of what our top priorities were from an appropriation standpoint, and you know, they had kind of doled it out, and things, I think it looks pretty good. You know, you never know. Everything could pass, you know, the houses and the House and the Senate, and then the governor may strike it all. You never know how it's going to turn out. But I'd say that we're in good hands, and it's moving along as well as we could hope. And we did, also, I wanted to mention that Dean Parkinson was up there with us, and he was great to have him there. That guy is well-known up there. He's been going up there for 20-plus years, so it helped.
They just didn't know he lived.
Between him and Aster, we were.
They just didn't know he lived in our town all these years.
Yeah, exactly.
So when we dragged him around with us, and he was real well-known, it was tough to go from one place to the other without him stopping to say hello or talk to somebody.
Absolutely. We did have the opportunity, when the Senate was debating the Stand Your Ground law, the bill, they're adjusting that, and we were able to, I just happened to walk in as the debate was going on, and we could hear the debate and saw the vote. The Senate passed it. The House hadn't voted on it yet. But it is fascinating to see your state government at work. It was excellent arguments on both sides. It was very good. The other thing, getting to a little bit more to the point here, is we, the committee meetings were going on for Bills 596 and 687, John, which are the ones that you're referring to for the communications. And we, it came up numerous times. We spoke to numerous colleagues about it, that this was something that we really did not support and should be shot down, if at all possible. We did run into, I did want to say, we ran into a good resource in the town of Davie that was also up there. I didn't bring his card tonight, but I will get the contact information. And they actually have somebody there that this falls right under his purview, and he, we went to a Chamber of Commerce event there, and he did a pretty good job of grilling the Chamber of Commerce, because the Chamber of Commerce is supporting this bill. And so he grilled them real well, and I spoke to him afterwards, got his card, and I told him we'd be in touch, because we want to, I think it can help us to partner up with Davie on this, and see if we can get a little bit more, get our voice heard a little bit more, stronger out there. So that was good. And then the last thing I'll end with is, speaking of rumors, I know there's a rumor that the Easter Bunny is going to be at the event at Rolling Oaks. There's also a rumor that if you pay your membership for Country Estates, that you get four free meals at the... New members. Yeah, that was the rumor I heard. Yes, new members. New members. If you join Country Estates, you get a free meal for your family of four. So come on out and enjoy. It's going to be a great event. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of things. I had got to pull out a leather trench coat I haven't worn in five or six years. It was that cold up there. So I wasn't shy about wearing my trench.
And how long had it been since you wore those socks?
I don't know. A long time. Yeah, I did wear socks, everybody. You know I don't wear socks most of the time, but when I have to, I do. I just want you to realize that. There are appropriate times when I absolutely have to wear socks, and I wore them in Dallas, Tallahassee, and I would have anyway, because it was really cold. So, but aside from that, Dean Parkinson joined us, as Steve mentioned, and he was a big help. Aster came, Dee's husband, Mike Schroeder, was there. We went around as like a pack, so we had a great turnout, us being three council members. I didn't see anybody from Pembroke Pines there at all. I didn't see anybody from Davie there at all. So we had a great turnout, a great showing, and we hit the ground running, and we, I think we're going to get some good results here in the next couple of months. So all that was looking good. We tried to see Katie Edwards. She was a little too busy, but we stopped by her office twice, just to make sure. So Katie, you know, we tried to see you. And Richard will see us when he gets back, which should be soon. Anything else you want to add, or no? Okay. We're good with council member comments. So look forward to the next trip. Let's see what we've got. Ordinance?
No.
No legal comments? Okay.
Sure, Mayor. First of all, I did speak to Katie, because I got an email from Southern Strategies, Nelson Diaz, and said that, hey, is Katie available? I said, she's already driving back to Fort Lauderdale. So I called Katie. I said, did you get to see Southwest Ranches? She said, everyone in your town still thinks I'm their representative. And he goes, I'm not. But everyone in your town has my cell phone number. If anyone needs anything, just tell them to call me. They don't need to try to get a meeting with me. Just call me. So once again, I'll tell anyone in the town, call Katie if you ever need her. She still is here, you know, in spirit, even though that they don't have her in our district. So she wanted me to pass that along. I do want to echo Councilmember Bright Cruz's sentiments. To me, you know, I'm so thankful that Southern Strategies helped you guys in Tallahassee, because to me, there's not a worse place to be in the world than Tallahassee during session. And so I'm glad they were able to be there. But one thing that no one stated is we were the only municipality up on Broward Days that got time to sit with the Chair of Appropriations, Budget Chair, to actually discuss the things that we were seeking funding for. And that meeting alone was worth all of your time there. So thank you very much, because if we're successful this year, it's because of that direct interaction in the face that they gave to our various projects. So thank you for that. You know, I don't ever talk about the quadruple items, but those of you who didn't know, the individuals here actually have lived in the ranches as far, as long ago as I did. They lived in Sterling Road where the fake guard is, you know? Their parents owned that house, and to me, who grew up right around the corner from where this is going, to see a ranches family coming back to the ranches, two brothers living in a site next to each other, you know, both of them divorced, if anyone is looking, to live in a site directly next to each other, and on a site that could have been subdivided into so much more, and a site being built by Rick Bell. I'm just, you know, I was thrilled to see all that from start to finish. So I wish them best of luck in the community again, and welcome back to the community. And I also wanted to say, as someone who grew up around the corner from there, they're going to have to spell Malaluka for the rest of their lives. So I wish them the best of luck with that as well, because that's not an easy one ever. A few months ago, you all may recall that we put in a secondary provider for internet telephones within the town, and we got a very good deal, and Russell did a great job negotiating the contractual elements of it. And the only reason I bring that up is because this week, it showed it actually worked. Our town phones were totally out, and it rolled over to the secondary provider, and the town was up and running almost instantly because the primary was out. So it's great to see when a plan works, and we save money, and it was, good job, Russell, on getting that in there, because it worked out well. On other legal things that are happening, we redrafted the fire contract and the police contract. We negotiated at length with Davie. We've come to a better understanding at a lower increase that would be for a five-year agreement. We gave them a proposed draft of a combined police and fire agreement to make it go for a five-year period, so we don't have to keep on doing these agreements. They are currently reviewing it, making modifications to it, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to come to terms, bring it before you for consideration, and have a wonderful provider for the next five years at least. So that's going very well. The waste RFP is the biggest thing that legal and a lot of staff has worked on this past week and a half. There were... There were more questions about the waste RFP than I think I've ever seen. I think there were 38 questions that we had to respond to yesterday. And we worked diligently to get it out. But we're hopeful that we're giving everyone a week extension to respond to the RFP. But we're still hopeful that everyone will submit in time for us to meet the deadline to bring it back before you for the next waste vendor. So that was that. On Pembroke Pine's update, obviously, the litigation has heated up tremendously as a result of the summary judgment defeat that occurred by Pembroke Pines. So much so that it's now gotten a little bit ridiculous. Andy Burns is three administrators, three, I think, three administrators after the CCA contract was terminated. And they've demanded his deposition. And if I tell you Andy knows nothing, he knows nothing about this matter, and we told them that. The only thing that occurred that Andy does know is I set him up pretty good and he didn't even know it. When Andy first started here, I told him he had to send a letter to Director Mead asking him a question about the status of the facility. So he's like, "Okay, just drafted." So I drafted the letter. Andy signed it. And now they wanna depose him about the letter that he drafted to Gary Mead. So I wish Andy the best of luck in April to have an entire deposition about a letter that I drafted. So I just wanted to put that out there on the record. And by the way, we did disclose to Pines that he knows nothing about this, but they don't believe us, so they still wanna depose him about it anyway. So it should be a very short but necessary deposition, according to them. But everything is still moving very swiftly ahead. We filed our motion for summary judgment and we'll give you dates once that hearing is set. And that's actually gonna be a very interesting one because we believe that 100%, we can prove that they interfered with the development of the prison. There's no doubt about that. So we think the judge should grant the summary judgment and then say, "Let's have a trial on damages and move on." So that's what we're gonna be expressing to the court in the next 60 days. Gay, in regards to the internet site, because I don't get to go to the historical meetings, I just wanna mention a couple of things on it. First, you know, always definitely get prices, you know, especially with procurement manuals. And I love local vendors, but you know, make sure that you cover yourself by getting competitive prices. The second thing is, a lot of organizations, including my own, are happy to give you money in consideration of the website coming. So if you already have 50 vendors and you go to those 50 and say, "100 bucks will put you in the website," you know, most sophisticated organizations will pay the money upfront to a town organization, even though you're not-for-profit. And I'm happy to do that with the same $100. And, you know, and you can pay for it that way without even coming back to the town council. So just a suggestion on that I wanted to make. Other than that, Mayor, I have no further comments.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And it's funny, Keith talked about my upcoming deposition. I now know that after five years, I've officially arrived as a rancher by being deposed by Pembroke Pine. The nice thing about going last is you guys have all covered pretty much everything I had to bring up. I just have one other item I wanted to throw at you. Following the last meeting, I had given you all a draft of the presentation we were putting together on that five-acre parcel. That has been completed. I have it to give to you all tonight to let you take a look at it. And obviously, pending your review, we'll start printing these out for the advisory boards so that they can discuss it in their meetings and go forward. You get the input from the advisory boards that you had sought. Another net, Mayor, that's all I have. I look forward to seeing you all on Sunday at the barbecue.
Hook it up. We get off light. Russell, number 10, ordinance, second reading.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an update to the 10-year water supply facilities plan and adopting and implementing amendment to the goals, objectives, and policies of the capital improvements element of the town of Southwest Ranches, comprehensive plan. Authorizing transmittal of the water supply facilities plan update and comprehensive plan amendment to reviewing agencies, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment? Back to us. No other comments from us? Alright, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
11 approval of minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any corrections from our public? Come on, you guys always correct us. No corrections? Okay. Come on up and speak there.
Just for the record, I had nothing to do with the correction.
It's just the essence of the conversation and what we talked about again last week. The way the minutes were rewritten really don't reflect that. So if people are relying, since there's only, there's a few handful of people that are at the meeting. So if you have all the public that's out there and if they rely on looking at minutes as to what took place, it still doesn't reflect accurately.
Decipher it, the way you...
It doesn't reflect it accurately. It still leaves it to believe. And maybe in the end, it is what it is. And I don't know what, you know, Emily's just, you know, given to you. But it still basically is out there that it's... That Emily stated to you was $4 million, where it doesn't also say in there that it was said that that was the highest end. Let them go back and put together a proper plan. So if people are...
More information will be coming. I guess I'll clear it up in the future.
That's probably the easiest.
Do you wanna reword that sentence?
Again?
Do you... I mean, just give us...
Just add that Emily sta... You say that Emily stated to you the $4 million and then that it was stated that that $4 million was the most conservative, highest-end cost of that.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
Are you comfortable that you can adjust that?
Vice Mayor, we certainly can do that. What we did was, we changed it in accordance with the motion that was made last week, or last meeting. So we can certainly make that change.
I think I made that motion.
I like Russell.
Are you blaming this on me?
Fix it however you like. What do you guys want to say? Well, I want Debbie to come up and rewrite it so we get it right. That's what I want.
How about Debbie work with Russell to correct it?
There we go. There we go. Let's put it to work.
I believe I captured what she is asking for, and I believe I'll be able to go ahead.
Why don't you... If you can write it up and then just...
Circulate it.
Touch base with her, make sure it reflects what she believes, Dee.
No problem.
So do we wanna wait?
So let's wait.
No, no. That's not these minutes. So this has nothing to do with the item on the agenda.
Okay. I've already made a motion to approve these.
Yeah.
Was there a second on that?
Yes, there was.
Yes, he seconded it.
Freddie did.
Freddie did?
Yes.
Oh, Freddie did, sorry.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
It's a motion to approve the minutes from the February 23rd.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, lucky us, appointment's number 12. Broward League of Cities delegate and alternate.
I'd like to make a motion. And my motion is that the mayor represent us. This is his first year as mayor, and I think it would be apropos.
Second.
Wait, who would be the alternate? You gotta throw an alternate.
Hold on. I'm not accepting that, but nice try, Charlie Brown. I'm still in the school. I'll make you a deal.
I will volunteer. I will volunteer to be an alternate.
Perfect. It's a motion and a second.
No, no, the deal isn't made. I'm voting against it.
Vice Mayor, this is a perfect time to call the question.
Call it, Russell. Call it quick.
You're not the mayor. You don't get to do that.
No, any council member can call the question.
Can they?
Yeah. Go.
Putting me at odds with the mayor. Nice. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
How did I get set up?
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
No.
Yes. And Mayor McKay?
No.
Alright, we have a four to one vote.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey.
Second.
Hold on. Let me make you... Let me give you notice. The alternate's gonna be filling in a lot because I'm not going.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We're done, right?
That was brutal.